Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting Tuesday, August 9th, 2022 at 7:00. Roll call, Andrew Murch is excused, Tim Messier?
Present.
Kathy Lepiori?
Present.
Spiro Thomo?
Present.
Aaron DeMello?
Present.
Wally McKenzie?
Present.
And Martina Shade? Present. I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, we actually have some people. Do I hear, is anybody out in our audience tonight interested in public input?
Madam Chair, David Adams, 1023 North Woodstock Road. Hope everybody can hear me, we had a hard time yesterday in about 150 degree weather, I think it's hotter up here than it was yesterday.
Yeah, we've got it better. Just for point of information, ours is only a three-minute window to speak and then we can extend it as needed.
No, I'm not here to read my thesis or anything like that, or a resume or anything like that.
We would enjoy that very much, I'm sure.
I just want to thank you, select board, the board members as well, for your convictions of going out and trying to do the right thing for our children and our parents of this community. It's so nice that we're able to see that we have a full house of board members that are willing to volunteer their time to do the right thing for our community. Even though you have a lot of things going against the situation at hand right now, it is nice to see the fact that we have a civil school board that is up here and wanting to learn and listen. And I, as a resident of this town, do really appreciate it. Though I do not have children any longer in the school system, school systems in the town of Southbridge, I do understand the need to be able to have a functioning school district, functioning schools, to help support the town itself for the future of this town. You know, I've spent the last four years on the town council, and one of the biggest things that I have tried to do is bring economic development, push for infrastructure work, and economic development has happened, and that's because it's a team effort, and by many on the council and the good staff here in the town of Southbridge. I come up here today, I've spent four years doing that, but the last two years I have on the town council, I would like to spend a little bit more time with the schools. I want to thank the chairwoman, chairman, or vice chairman, for meeting with me the other day, having a great conversation. I thank the receiver for having me as well, having a great conversation. I look forward to the near future for collaboration between the town council and the school board and the state itself. I ask that the Parents Association do their best to come here to show their support as well and give fresh new ideas where fresh new ideas need to take place to help support you all in the near future to take back over the school system as appropriate. At any time, I heard at the last school board meeting of support needed by the town council, I do believe wholeheartedly, at least while I've been here on the town council, the town council has supported the school board as best as it could with the limited responsibilities that you have at the time. That it will not change this year, that will not change next year. I think our role is to be supportive of you as well. I ask any type of education that you may need, or any guest speakers, or whatever it may be, if you need help with anything, by all means, everybody has my cellphone number, and I will do my damnedest to help support that and move that along. I do want to make clear as we move forward that I want to be able to, as a town, is able to receive back the school system, and when that may be, or whatever benchmarks that may have, that we are willing to help expedite that. Again, I just want to say thank you. I do hope and pray that more parents will get involved with the school system, be it through the association, at the schools, or out here in front of the dais, and to speak for those that they represent, usually the schoolchildren. Again, I really appreciate it. I thank you for everything. I look forward to further conversations with the vice chair, chair, or any board member that's sitting up here, along with Council Ryan, who is the subcommittee EHS chair, and she knows she has my support as well. And I just want to say thank you again for all the work that you do, and I look forward to a full agenda from here on out. And I guess that's my three minutes. But I thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who chooses to speak to the board this evening? Is there anyone else who chooses to speak before the committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll go on to chairman's announcements. Lots of fun announcements, again, starting this year, the opening of school. School will open for most students on Monday, August 29th, that will be grades one through 12. For those of us who are so old that we think that school still starts after Labor Day, it does not, it's going to start the last Monday in August. Tuesday, August 30th, will be kindergarten, and Wednesday, August 31st, will be preschool. For anyone who has not yet registered their child, or if any of you know of anyone in your neighborhood who has not yet registered your child, the school system has made it much easier now to register them. They have a one-stop shopping. You go to, you can either call 508-764-5414, that's the main line for the school department, and they will direct you. You can go to 25 Cole Ave., which is the, now the old high school, the Cold Building as they're calling it, or you can go online. When you're online, they will give you the forms that you need to fill out. It would probably be easier for you to fill them out at home, because they'll be asking you things like the name and address of an emergency contact, and if you're like me, you know their name, but you can't remember their cellphone number. So again, the enrollment paperwork is on the line, and you'd be fine. Anybody who's interested in more information about the opening of school, or has forgotten the date, just go to the Southbridge Public School website homepage, all of the information is there under for families, and there are also some really neat things. I know you're not going to be able to see this, but all of the elementary schools are having a night where you can go and meet some of the teachers, meet the principals, they're giving out free backpacks, just, they don't have a lot of them, but they've been given some by Life Song Church and other community organizations. So if you're in need of a backpack, this is the place to look. Monday, August 29th, at Eastford Road, is the first day of school. Wednesday, September 21st, they're going to have snow cones on the playground for a little welcome back to school. A little bit more serious note, we've had a couple of bad years with COVID, and the vice chair and I were talking, and we wanted to call out some people who've made getting through COVID possible. Not perfect, but possible. The school committee would like to commend all the staff, the teachers, the associates, the cleaning crew, the food service crew, the office staff, and the administrators for their hard work and dedication to our students. A special shout-out goes to the students themselves and their families for working together to maintain their educational progress. We know this was not easy, having your children at home, working online, but we appreciate your efforts. And Dr. Valar is to be commended for his guidance and leadership in this truly unprecedented time. One more? When my pastor says one more, we get nervous. One more. In the last meeting, I made a mistake. When I looked at the list of employees needed, I looked at all of the coaching positions. Coaching positions are advertised once a year, usually they're only advertised in the school buildings for the teachers, because they will get, they get first call on coaching positions and different special aides and helps and clubs. This time, they were posted on the main website, and I mistook it for not having those coaches. For that, I'm very sorry. There are still two volleyball positions available. Volleyball's fun, you should get out there and play volleyball with the kids. That ends my announcements. We have new business tonight. Various people have suggested that we stop having a members forum. That's at the end of the meeting when all of us get a chance to talk about things that are bothering us, things that we've enjoyed. I've heard people talk about how good the band was, how good graduation was. It's our time to both honor our students and our teachers, and also to point out issues. So we're going to have a discussion tonight. Do I have anyone who's interested in discussing this? Okay, Wally?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that I understand the premise behind not having a members forum. However, I think that each member may have a concern, and if there is a concern, they should be given the opportunity to present that concern, to make a suggestion. I think we need to avoid political or confrontational comments at that time, but I think if it's done respectfully and it's done with concern, I think that it's something that should actually continue.
Anyone else? Kathy?
I absolutely think that it should continue. If someone doesn't have anything to say that night, they can just pass on it, but otherwise, it's like you're being stifled, maybe. I know I have to be careful how I say things, but I think that we should be given the opportunity to speak.
Tim?
So, I did a little bit of research on this topic, and I looked into other school committees in other towns. There's not a, I did not find any other school committee that has a members forum in their agenda whatsoever. Just off the top of my head, Auburn School Committee, Webster School Committee, Dudley Charlton School Committee, they do not have a members forum. So, I appreciate the thought and the idea behind having a members forum, because I do agree that most of the time, we do have great things to say about the things that were said during our school committee meetings, and great feedback to give to individuals or groups, or clubs, or whatever that we may have. But I think that, for the most part, I know that Martina has given us an opportunity and reached out before every school committee meeting, and asked us all if there is anything that we feel we should be including in the agenda. By having a members forum, I think the concern isn't necessarily about what kind of feedback we can give that's positive, I think it's more about the concern of whether or not we're violating some sort of meeting rules, open meeting rules. And if we don't have specific topics in the agenda, but we speak about them in the forum, then that is a violation of the open meeting rules, which is a concern. And if we move forward with open forum, and listen, I totally, totally feel confident that all of us have great intentions when we speak during our open meetings, or, sorry, during our open forums, but there is a real risk of violating open meeting law by having the open forum. And so, I don't mean to, I don't mean to be disrespectful in my feelings about this. I just feel like if we have things that we're concerned about, I know that Martina is totally open to putting them on the agenda, and the public has the opportunity to view the agenda, and therefore has the opportunity to be here to speak about those things, just like we do during the meeting. But if we start talking about things that aren't on the agenda during that open forum, then we could get ourselves into some trouble. So that is why I feel strongly about not having the open forum.
Can I ask a question relevant to those comments? So, the concern with the open meeting law is that any topic that's going to be discussed should be on the agenda ahead of time, so that people are aware that that topic is going to be discussed, and can do research or come to the meeting if they're specifically interested in that topic, and so that topics won't be discussed that people weren't aware of and not prepared for. Is that correct, according to your understanding?
Yes, that is my understanding, and like I said, I did look at other school committee agendas, and in none of the agendas that I viewed, there were open forum or any indication that members of the committee could speak about topics at the end of the school committee meeting.
So, in your research, I don't know if you ran into this, or in, maybe in discussion with anyone else, with Dr. Valar or the town manager, I'm just curious as to why this topic is coming up now, if anybody has information on that.
Spiro?
Do you want to take this, or do you want me to take it regarding our meeting with?
You can take it.
Two things came out in regards, during our meeting with Dr. Valar, and it was a good meeting, but in regards to this particular item, I support having member forum, but his concern is that information that sometimes come from us are not correct. That's one. And speaking to him, and correct me if I'm wrong, I got the feeling that he could himself eliminate this from our agenda.
As far as I understand, we are still in control of the agenda. The chair and superintendent work together to do the agenda. If Dr. Valar isn't planning on being at the meeting, I have still contacted him and asked him if there was anything he wanted me to announce during the open, during chairman's announcements, and then this year, it was the opening of school, which would be our purview to announce. As for...
He spoke to us about, someone mentioned concerns, which are valid, but if we have concerns, or if someone calls us in regards to concerns, we should immediately forward that concern to his office. Am I right there?
That's what he indicated, yes. Wally?
Yes, through you, to Tim, and this is not like a rebuttal, just a question. I'm wondering, and maybe one of our town councils might be able to answer this question as well, I'm kind of curious how this would also affect our town council, because they also have a members forum, if I'm not mistaken, in their meetings.
Well, I will say this.
Counselor Adams? Name and address?
David Adams.
Thank you.
I would, obviously, I think it's a very legitimate question to ask oneself, because like citizens forum is not a requirement, but it is part of our rules and regulations and our charter, or I should say, rules and regulations within our own rules, I should say. It wouldn't affect the town council, the town council makes its own decisions separate at this point in time. I would caution though, regardless, I'm a true believer in being able to get up here at the dais and speak. I am a true believer that you are the representatives of this town when it comes to school matters, regardless of the logistics that's happening right now within our town, and I do believe you all have a voice. I would, as far as Tim stated, be very cautious about how we go about speaking, because you can open yourself up to any type of litigation. We are not perfect at the town council after a five-hour meeting last night. I will say, it gets hot and it gets heated. It's a tough town, and you have to have thick skin in this town to be where you're sitting right now. I just caution what you stated there, and reminder that some of these things, it's great to hear the positive things that you personally, as a representative of the school board, sees and discusses out there, and thanks the superintendent of the schools. But if I'm answering the question, it doesn't really affect us at all, because we already have our set rules and regulations, and we allow citizens and anybody else to speak openly, to a point.
Thank you, Counselor.
What about the open meeting rules?
Well, you're allowed to go up there and speak. I will tell you that I'm not a lawyer, and I would always contact the AG's office if there is a serious concern, but I do know other towns that do have it, and do have councils, I'm sorry, forums, so the representatives can speak, and nobody has ever questioned that, nobody has taken us to court on this issue, and it allows, I would say personally, you to have a conversation to the people directly, besides what the chair may state at the very beginning of the meeting. If there is any other question, I can always contact the attorney generals and do more research for you and help you out in that manner, absolutely, I'll look into it. I will state this, if you may, if I may, Madam Chair, I do recommend you keep it in. I do recommend that you're able to do those things, but I also respect the fact that you don't want to go into litigation, because you open your mouth and have no clue what you're talking about, which I've seen multiple times. And then I believe that to be the chair's responsibility to shut that situation down, that's why they have the gavel. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to speak for Andrew Murch, he was very careful to call me this afternoon and say that he wanted to weigh in on this subject. He says he doesn't mind if we get rid of the members forum, but if we get rid of it, we need some other way that we can talk about issues amongst us, because our agendas are so short, not being able to vote on anything, that we don't get to discuss. Dr. Valar's statement was that, well, we got to discuss them during, when something came up on the agenda, but in point of fact, we have no agenda, because we can't vote on anything. He suggested that we go to having a subcommittees, where we could talk about the budget, curriculum, those kinds of things. That is just one suggestion, but I promised him that I would be very faithful to be sure that I did express his opinion. Anyone else?
Yes, I think I would like to say regarding the whole litigation thing, I can see definitely where there's concern. With every privilege comes responsibility, you know, and if we have the opportunity to be able to say anything during the meeting, we need to be careful how we're using that, and make sure that to the best of our ability, we have done our homework, and that we know what we're talking about. But I think sometimes, and just mentioned, I did communicate this with Dr. Valar already, so he's kind of aware of what I'm thinking here, but sometimes when we're sitting up here and we say something even that's completely incorrect, we're not always making it up on the spot. Sometimes we're saying things that we've heard in the community, and we don't realize that they're incorrect, because we've heard them from various sources, and a lot of other people are thinking those things are true as well. So, when we say those in the school committee in a public situation like this, especially if Dr. Valar is here, he actually has the opportunity to respond to this incorrect, maybe community-wide thinking, and actually correct us as a community to understand the school and the administration a little bit better. So, while I think we do need to be careful about what we're saying, and make sure that we've, like I say, done our homework, if our community is thinking that we have tons of openings still at the school for teachers, and really, we don't, it's good for Dr. Valar to know, oh, the whole community thinks we're not prepared and we're not ready, and it would be good to publicly say something and make sure that people understand how this actually works, so that, one of the real tricks when you have a receivership, I think, one of the things that I've seen is that there's less communication sometimes, and less opportunity for the community to understand what's happening at the school, and what's going on with the administration. And I think the opportunity for members forum, for us to say things, helps him a little bit understand what the community is thinking, and I think that's really valuable. And so, while I understand the concerns about violating open meeting law and things like that, I think the more opportunity we have to share in this meeting, the more he can see what is, what the community as a whole is thinking. The truth is, a lot of us here in the community don't have kids in the Southbridge Public Schools. We're taxpayers, we're concerned about the kids, we want to be involved in what's going on, we're voting, but we don't specifically have kids in the school, so we may not get all the letters and all the information, the opportunities to actually talk with teachers and things like that. So a lot of times, we're kind of in the dark, and maybe we're listening to Facebook posts or tweets or things that talk about misinformation, you know, that's not necessarily the best source for us to really understand what's happening, and so, I think if we have this opportunity to share during the school committee meetings, Dr. Valar sees it, he sometimes is here in person, and would have the opportunity to refute it if it needs to be, or correct it, or maybe just get an idea of, oh, I thought this was a great idea, and the community really doesn't think so, you know, so it's just additional communication. And I think communication in a situation like ours is super helpful, so that's my opinion.
Tim, then Wally, then Counselor Adams.
So, you, so, I was thinking about what was just being said, and I was thinking that I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm wondering, though, if having agenda items like community concerns, where we could speak about community concerns, or an agenda item like celebrate the schools, where we could talk about things that are positive in the schools, that we're noticing, that we've seen, things that we witness as we go through the schools... things that we witness as we go through the schools, things that we hear from students or teachers or administrators, things like that, that we could put in the agenda so that it kind of, we still get a chance to speak about those concerns or those great things. But they're agenda items that are actually more specific, instead of saying members forum where it's kind of like a free-for-all and you have no idea what's going to be said. You know what I mean? So I'm wondering if those two things might be, might be more advantageous for us as a committee? So it gives us something to think about on a weekly basis, so that the community knows that we have things that we might talk about. I mean, if nobody has any community concerns that we've heard about, then we don't have to speak, you know? And we can just go right over it. Or if we have, obviously, the, I would assume that we would have plenty to celebrate in regards to the schools and that would give us an opportunity to speak about those things. So, I'm just thinking of alternatives that would give us an opportunity to say the things that we want to say, while also not messing with the open meeting rules and laws.
I think if we're actually going to follow through and put those things in the agenda faithfully every month or whatever, I would be on board with that.
Madam Chair, I liked the fact that Tim enlightened me on the points of open meeting
laws. I think that whether we call it or refer to it as members forum or, you know, conversation on topics that are being presented, I think that if we primarily stay on topic with the agenda, stay right onto the agenda, not deviating from it in any way, I think we're going to be relatively safe. And we, even then, we don't have to comment on items or whatever. We can either talk about it, give our opinion on it, or suggestions, or not. But I think, I like the idea of staying on the agenda. I think that's really important for the open meeting laws. Thank you.
Counselor?
Madam Chair, David Adams, 2023, Stock Road, Southbridge. I, I, I think this is the perfect example of great dialogue. And when you, and, and I would think, I would recommend only, obviously, further discussion on this matter. But I would ask this question. When you have that power and you have that agenda item and you, first and second the motion, and then you have a discussion on it, what stops from you, what stops you from providing false information?
We can't vote on anything. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, you, you are 100% correct, but isn't this the first step of, of bringing back parts of the school board? You're actually having a discussion right now on how your agendas will look like in the near future when you do. So, nothing's wrong with reaching out to council. Nothing stops you from having further discussion on this. But this is perfectly what people as a resident would like to see the school board do, is to start building its rapport and saying, hey, this is what we're looking at. We're preparing ourselves for the near future. We're preparing our kids, our parents and all that kind of stuff in this dialogue. But when you do get that back, what happens there when you do, do a discussion again? Madam Chair, you have the gavel. You can stop that. And if, but false information may go out there by mistake. And I am not somebody that is throwing a stone at a glass house at this point in time. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I've heard some very interesting ideas. The, the question of the open meeting, we are supposed to have on the agenda, anything that we're planning on discussing. We can add agenda items, but that takes a vote of the coun, of the council, of the school committee. The next two meetings are going to be a little bit different. The next meeting is going to be, the receiver is going to give us the end of the year report and the opening of the year report. And I'm assuming that that will be a fairly full agenda. And it might be a, a good one not to, not to, not to change anything, because I am sure that we will have questions for the receiver. The following meeting is tentatively scheduled to be at one of our elementary schools. Dr. Valar would like us to go to our schools to see what's going on, to meet the teachers, to even meet some of the students who are in one of the after-school programs. Again, on that one, I think would be a good one not to have a members forum. So maybe it can be a more fluid thing rather than us all expecting to say something profound. I will take this under advisement. I'll talk to Dr. Valar, I'll talk to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and see what their thoughts on this are. But as I said, the next school committee meeting is going to be very full. And, yeah, it's just going to be very full for the next two meetings. So why don't we, well, we neither table nor do anything with this because it was just a discussion. From now on, anything that you want as an agenda item to discuss, we will see to it that it, we have time in the meeting scheduled to discuss that item. This seemed to have worked very well today and I think it will work in the future. Any other comments? You're thinking, I can see that.
Just a question. So are you suggesting that for now, we take off the members forum item from our agendas or just leave it as is for the moment?
I think next week, we would leave it as it is. When we go to the schools, we would probably leave it off, because I'm sure that as things are going in that kind of a meeting, people will be saying very positive things about the students without, without needing a particular forum. I know that when I see school kids showing me their work, I, I cannot help but say wonderful things about it. Members forum. We do have it on the agenda for tonight. So, does anybody have anything positive they would like to say about the schools? Oh, that's not good.
No, we just don't want to talk.
I'm very, I'm very excited about the opening of schools. I saw a thing on Facebook today saying, you know, congratulations to all the people who are getting ready for the opening of schools, the custodians, the secretaries, the administrators, the teachers. Teachers start back for their first professional development, I think on the 16th. It'd be a busy day, a busy week, a busy year. Yes?
I was just going to say, this is kind of a perfect example in a way of what we were just talking about. If we don't have anything for members forum, we don't have to really do it. And I think sometimes when we have more on the agenda, there's less need maybe even for it, so.
Probably correct. That's what I was thinking about next week's meeting and certainly the ones at the school. There will be so much going on and we don't want to keep the teachers or the students. Yes?
You just said next week's meeting? We have?
Oh, did I say next week's meeting? No, it's not next week. It will be...
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to correct you.
No, no, no.
I just didn't want to show up and nobody's here.
The older, the older you get, the more fluid time becomes.
I know.
No, that one will be, will be the second Tuesday in September.
Okay.
The following one will be sometime in October. That's going to, to probably be a little time fluid based on what the schools can arrange for us.
Good.
Next on the agenda is adjournment. That's what it looks like, yeah. Nice day. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Do we have a motion? Wally?
Second.
And Tim? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice rest of your summer.